We'll now call counsel to order again, returning from closed session. Madam Clerk, would you call roll call again? Counsel member Vega?
Here.
Counsel member Starbuck?
Present.
Counsel member Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Present.
Any report on action taking from closed session? City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, the city council just met in closed session and discussed the two items of business on the agenda for closed session item, and there were no reportable actions taken.
Thank you. If you will please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for A slight addition to our agenda. City Manager, I believe you had some items you'd like to report out.
Oh, thank you, Madam and counsel. Just a quick update, and the first one is I'm going to be suggesting a date for the council goal-setting of Saturday, February 2nd. So I'm sort of taking a straw vote if you all are able to meet that date. I pushed it out to -- we were trying to do it in January, but now that we're doing the appointment, I thought maybe push it out to the first weekend in February so we have the new -- hopefully the new appointee sitting up here. Is that a date that might work for everybody?
I see head nodding, and I think the only one left to check with would be the appointee.
Okay, so we'll begin -- we've already started working on at least getting the process going. The other one is whoever is chosen, hopefully this tonight, will work with the new council member to schedule the training with the League of Cities for the new council member. That training is actually happening the end of, let's see, January 30th to February 1st, and it's through the League of Cities. And I believe that session is down in Irvine, if I'm correct. Another one, and this was to see if you had any interest in us bringing back the building down at, I believe it's 1420 East Ocean. It's next to the senior housing building down there. It's been vacant for some time. There was a stipulation that the bottom floor had to be 12,000 feet of taxable and retail and tax generating use. It's been vacant since, well, last six years. It hasn't had any takers on it. So I didn't know if you want us to bring that back so you can discuss, do we want to remove that and possibly have it as a medical-type building, office-type building, or keep it as it is? So I was gonna, again, take a straw vote to see if that had any interest.
Anyone object to that being brought back for discussion? I see three heads nodding, so there's at least three of us that are okay for at least bringing it back for discussion and what our options might be.
Okay. And the last one is just, we've had a number of regular special meetings since basically November almost, so the first official regularly-scheduled meeting is going to be this next Tuesday, January 15th, at which time we should then be back on a normal rotation barring any other unforeseen issues that come up. That was it.
Okay, thank you. The first oral communications is on any item related to the city business, and just to let you know, there is another opportunity as part of the process that we're here for tonight for public comment. So this first oral communication is really on any topic for a city issue, not necessarily for the appointments. So if it's all possible, we ask that you refrain from making comments about appointments till we actually get to that comment period. So I'll open the floor for oral communications on any manner, and you're limited to three minutes. If you have something you'd like to speak to, please step forward to the microphone. Seeing no one rise, I will close the oral communications and move to our first agenda item, appointments, and ask our city attorney, Brian, who I am so sorry, the chain of last names I have not memorized yet, so if you'll please introduce yourself when you come to the microphone.
Happily. My name's Brian Wright-Bushman. Sometimes I am titled under Bushman, sometimes under Wright, but it's Wright-Bushman.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So as you know, the only item that we're here for tonight is to appoint a new council person to the vacant seat. At the December 18th meeting of this council, the council decided on an order of events for this evening. That order is stated on the agenda. So first is to review the applications for appointment to fill the midterm city council seat vacancy created by Janelle Osborne being elected mayor. There was a process established for turning in applications for this position. Ten applications were received, and those applications have been included in the agenda The second order of business is to receive public comment regarding the appointment. The third order of business is to receive presentations from applicants wishing to be appointed to the vacancy. At the December 18th meeting, it was determined that all candidates could remain in the room for that discussion, and that each candidate would be given three minutes to speak. The next item of business is if prepared to do so, the council will vote to make an appointment to the vacant city council seat. And finally, if an appointment is made and if the appointee is present at this meeting, then the council shall direct the city clerk to administer the oath of office and seat the new council member on the dais. A few more items to mention. In terms of the order that the applicants will speak to the council, the council had asked that the city attorney choose a random order. Jeff Malavi, the city attorney, did randomize each of the names of the potential candidates, and that order is presented on the proposed ballot for this evening. Also, I believe that ballot is available. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? So the order of names on that list is the order that the candidates will speak. Finally, regarding the process for the appointment of the candidates, it was determined that a method called star voting would be used. This is essentially a two-step process. So in the first step, each candidate is ranked. There are 10 candidates, so the ranking would be 1 through 10, 10 being the person who is most preferred. And then after those, after that scoring takes place, those numbers will be totaled, and the two candidates who have received the highest score will then move into, we'll call it step two, which is a runoff. And those two individuals will be given a vote from each of the council persons depending on which of them received the higher score in step one. At this time, before we move forward, I would recommend or ask the council if there are any proposed changes to the voting method or any desire to select a potential tie-breaking procedure. It might be advisable to do that now before the voting takes place. Neither of those is required, but I thought it was worth mentioning that now might be a good time to do that before the voting takes place if that is the desire of the
Counsel member Mosby.
Is there a reason to go all the way down through all 10? I mean, without -- I mean, is there a point where you could stop at, say, four, or five, or six? Do you need to go all the way through?
You don't. There is no requirement that voting be done this way. It's up to the discretion of the council, as I believe the explanation for all of the -- well, the implication of not going all the way down is that in step two of the process, it's possible that, for example, one of the, if one of the two highest-scoring candidates perhaps received the same score, so let's say that there's 10 candidates, so if you only did five through 10, then six of those candidates have been ranked, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and there are four that received either no number or maybe zero. And so it's possible that in step two, both of the two highest-scoring candidates will have received a zero from one of the council persons, and so basically that will, it will be a wash, but that could be fine.
I'm just saying, just, you know, you're getting down to the certain points, you're gonna be at that end, you know? I really don't believe anybody out there of the 10 are filing in deserve a one. So I'm just saying, so is there a way that we could just stop at the five component, you know, just down five?
That's absolutely fine, and that's up to the discretion of the council if you'd prefer to do it that way.
Well, I don't know what anybody else thinks on that. I just think you could make it a little softer, easier on that, that you don't have to -- I mean, you could do the whole vote, maybe it doesn't get revealed. If you have to, you don't have to go any deeper.
So the one way to solve this problem is I understand that there is a lack of desire to issue a one to anyone, because no one wants to be ranked at one. So if it is council's desire, you could step back to the original presentation of the star that allowed you to hand out multiple scores of the same number to multiple candidates. So instead of scoring someone at one, you could score five people with a three, if you didn't want to go any lower than that. But I think not scoring someone, you have the risk of you losing your opportunity for a vote if someone gets a high enough vote and makes it through as one of the final two candidates, and you didn't score them, then you don't have any input on that second round. So I don't want to step away from the star because I think we really presented a good option to the community and to the candidates. They came into this knowing how they were going to be scored, so I don't want to step away from the star methodology, but I would be comfortable saying, if you choose not to score someone, or you choose to give multiple twos, threes, nines, tens, I'm okay with that, because at least you've scored them and they are still ranked so that on the second half, if they happen to make it through and you scored them differently than the rest of us, at least your score's there, and you don't lose your opportunity to have that score considered on those top two candidates.
What if, what if you scored multiple tens?
Absolutely. I mean, that gives you the option that you can do that, but that means that you're okay if you say you gave three candidates a ten. It means you're okay with any of those three candidates, that all three are equal to you, and you would be fine with any one of those candidates being appointed. If you were the only one who gave the ten, or one other person gave a ten, and there needed to be a tie, you potentially would be the tie-breaker because you gave three tens and said any one of these would be okay, and so we can break the tie with one of your tens, because you said, yeah, any of these are good. So it's your choice, and I respect your willing, your wanting to not rank somebody and feel a concern about them thinking it's a judgment on them, and it's not. It's an examination of qualifications, but if that's something you want to do, that's up to you. I'm gonna honor the ranking and rank, but again, if those of you on council would like to go one step back and still use the star method, and the star method said you could, you could give three threes to three people, and you could give two fours to two different people, that's fine. It still manages to bring a total, it still means you've ranked everyone, and it's just your choice that you have said these are equal in my mind.
Would that need a vote majority of council to move forward in that direction?
Yes, so the, we would need at least three people to vote on what the method would be, and right now, I'm hearing, if I understood, Madam Mayor, you're suggesting that people could do it either way, or do you want to specify one way that they do it?
Well, I personally don't have a problem with the ranking, so I think leaving the option to honor the original methodology there, because I could choose to do that still. I mean, I don't have to multiple-use numbers. So if anyone wants to continue to honor the methodology we had put in place, it wouldn't violate the stepping back and deciding to say that as an individual voter, I want to give this, these three candidates a two and these two each a four, because I'm choosing not to do that. It doesn't, so it's not violating that stepping back if you choose to maintain the original agreement that says I'm gonna rank everybody and choose a single number for each person. Before we take a vote, because we're making a change, and I think it's really important that we take public comment on that, because this is a transparency issue, and we want to honor that with the community. So I think we need to open it up for public comment and get feedback on if the community understands what we are suggesting we're doing and why we're doing it, and give us feedback on that. So public comment is open, and you have, let's limit it to two minutes since we're trying to move on to the agenda item.
My name is Lorraine Waldau, and I was at the previous meetings where we went over and looked at the diagrams and everything for this voting, and I think that before the application went out, we decided that that, you decided that that was going to be the methodology, and I'm against this multiple givings or whatever. If you wanted to say, we'll go down to five, and then five don't get scored, or something like that, but not different people doing different things. I think the candidates who applied knew what the scoring was gonna be before they made the application, and I think it's a real step back.
Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment and bring it back to discussion with Counsel member Starbuck.
I kinda like the option of being able to do a tie between some people and also, you know, I mean, it's not that much of a change in here. It's still a ranking, and it will throw a little bit of diversity in there other than the standard one through 10, so I'd be very fine with a small change in that.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Counsel member Vega?
Along with a comment first, if I could.
Sure.
Okay. I think it's, it actually gives someone an extra opportunity to actually allow someone to be ranked evenly instead of individually. I think the original way was to, everybody had to have a different number all the way down, but if someone had an actual two fours or two threes or something like that, you're giving somebody another opportunity for us to take a second look at it. So I'd have to, I'll give you a second on that one. I don't know if going back to having both methods, I think, is a little confusing, probably for the audience and the public, you know? To have two methods, you can go either zero through 10, or you can decide whichever way. I think we should decide one way or the other.
So the motion on the floor is that one through 10 is still your ranking options, but that if you choose to, you can give multiples of the same number to multiple candidates. So if you have three individuals that you want to give a three to, you may do that. That's the motion on the floor.
I'll give it a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll vote. And that passes 3-1. So we will switch the methodology for the public. It really doesn't change how we will be ranking individuals. This is the way the original star methodology was presented, so we're just taking one step back, but we still are implementing the score then automatic runoff procedure. Now, the other issue that we probably want to discuss is if we end up with a tie, do we want to have a tie breaking methodology in place that we have approved ahead of time? So are there any suggestions, Mr. Wright-Bushman, regarding what those might be that we could consider? And then I will take comment from council and then public comment as if we need one.
There are at least three that come to mind, although there are probably other options as well. Perhaps this, well, if you wanted to go with the absolute simplest, a flip of a coin would be the simplest, although I'm sure it will seem arbitrary. One that would be less arbitrary and still quite simple would be, as discussed, this star voting process has a step one and a step two, right? And the step one results in a list of scores, and the two highest move to step two. Now, if step two results in a two-to-two tie, one way to resolve the tie would be to go back to step one, and whoever received the flat-out highest score is the appointee, but only in the event that step two has resulted in a tie. That would be another option. The third option is for the council simply to discuss among yourselves if you can come to a compromise between the two highest-scoring candidates. There may be other options as well. Those are, those are the three that come to mind.
Does council a wish to put a methodology in place ahead of the voting, and if you do, do you have a preference? Counsel member Vega?
City Attorney, I think the latter option that you had there, where the council could come back and have another discussion, maybe you could clarify exactly what you meant by that, okay? It would come back to us, it seems like.
Yeah, I simply mean, at that point, you know, the hypothetical situation is you've narrowed it down to two candidates. You could either decide to simply have a discussion among yourselves about the relative merits of those two candidates. That may still result in a tie, however, because you may not be able to come to a consensus. So that doesn't guarantee, it's not, strictly speaking, it's not a tie-breaker, because it doesn't guarantee that the tie will be broken, but it is one option of moving forward. However, if that is the chosen method, you still may want a second tie-breaker, because there's no guarantee that that will result in a, in an outcome. I will also add that as to the decision to go back to step one, where you pick the highest number, that is a decision that should obviously be made before you all vote, because after you vote, you will know who received the highest number, and that will not be probably the best time to try to decide that type, to choose that tie-breaking method, because you will already know what result it will bring.
Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. Even going back to one could still lead to a tie at level one. There's still a possibility that if you go up and two people are tens, you're still at a tie. But it is, it's another, it's always tough when you have four people, six, eight, whatever the even number is, it's gonna be tough. So whatever you choose is your choice, but just know that we can always end up back at the very end, which you hate to say is a coin toss, but it could be an ongoing discussion.
Counsel member Vega?
I think I'd like to follow those two options, obviously. We need two methodologies to break a tie, bring it back to council in the event of a tie for that discussion, as long as it's open and transparent, and the public's involved. And then the second, and then after that, if we still have an impasse, maybe go back to the total score method to break the tie. It would be my proposal.
I will politely disagree that putting that in that order unfortunately still muddies the utilization of the highest vote getter to break the tie, because you've brought it back to discussion to council, and if we hit a deadlock, we know already who has that number, and it seems futile to, futile to argue about somebody when you know outright who the highest number is. So I would amend your motion to state that if we're going to set a tie-breaking methodology, that it be step back one and look at who had the absolute total of numbers. So it needs to be an either-or rather than council discussion to see if we can come to decision, oh, but we can't because we're still locked, and now we're gonna go to that. So again, I would say we still need to choose between the two, and my recommendation would to be go to step one and look and see who had the highest.
Mr. City Attorney, can, would there not, could there not be a result into a tie, even with that methodology?
It can, so I think that the only guaranteed option for resolving a tie is the coin flip, unfortunately. I think that the next best is to do the, go back to step one, and there certainly is no guarantee of a tie-break based on simply discussing the matter. So yes, as the city manager said, going back to, the going back to step one method could
So the potential proposal could be, we go back to step one, and if that is, started out as a tie, we go to the coin toss, so that it's a two-part. That says, the goal is to not have a tie in the automatic runoff. If we end up with a tie in the automatic runoff, go back to step one and see who had the highest total. If the two highest totals were actually a tie, then we would go to a coin toss.
Mayor?
I'll concur with that.
I was just gonna say, before the coin toss, let's say you go through one, and you go through the second one, you might have a discussion just to see with, you know, the final two candidates out of the four, is there any opportunity for one of the four to say, yes, okay, I can change my vote? It's just an option. If not, then you have to go to the next step.
Does anyone want to make that amendment, or are we good with?
Yeah, I'd like to amend what the city manager proposed there, as far as to bring it back, and still with the option, and then go back to your step one.
Okay, so we're going with, we're going to the automatic runoff. If that ends up in a tie, we're going back to step one to see who had the highest vote. If that started out with the two highest votes being a tie, we'll bring it back for council discussion to see if anyone is willing to change their mind, and if no one is willing to change their mind, then we will go to a coin toss. Coin toss. Flip of the coin.
Yeah, I can concur with that motion. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so that is our discussion. I would, again, because this is a transparency issue, and this is a new decision, I want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to make comment, so we will take brief public comment, and given this is something of a yes or a no or a potential suggestion, let's limit this to a one-minute comment, please.
Hi, my name's Tim Becker. I'm a substitute for the K-12 world. I'm a college professor. I've run software companies. My comment is, this is confusing as hell for me. What I would suggest is that you have 10 positions. If you total the 10, nine, eight, seven, six, all the way up, it comes up to 55. You should just be able to, each of you, give whoever you want to any score, but it should only total 55, because if you duplicate three, for example, twice, and you don't take that out, that totals, if it's 10, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, 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 that totals 58. You're giving too many points to certain people. You should just give 10, nine, eight, seven, total 55. You could give all 55 for the first one if you want to, but do, this is, sorry, this is next to monkey work. This is, this, you gotta do statistically, you have to do it this way. Otherwise, you're gonna get into all kinds of mess-up. A flip of the coin, or redo it based on three people, then again, you still have the points, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other feedback on our discussion? Okay. Council desire? We have a motion?
I can see the validity in the comment there, where you can assign points, but the max you could do is 55 total points, then.
So the only downfall is we have decided on the ranking system already. So I, instead of saying that you could give one candidate 55 points, that would destroy the star methodology. So the only limitation would be that you could give no more than 55 points total when you're totaling the number of points you've given, but I disagree with giving any one candidate 55 points, because it would completely destroy the star methodology. So...
So it'd be a maximum of 10 with any candidate, as long as you don't exceed 55 through the whole ballot?
That's why messing with a design after it's already been presented is a very bad idea. So we have a methodology we've discussed. It sounds like we actually don't have consensus on a tie-breaking, so I'm going to suggest that we don't put a solution in place, that we go through our methodology, and if we end up with a tie, we deal with it in the moment and just take the messiness that it is. Counsel member Mosby?
Okay, you know, in light of the public dis, comment, I think that he is right and maybe we should reconsider what we did vote on changing that. It's just stick with the original 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Because I think he's right that things could get skewed.
So I have a motion that I would readily second, given my vote on that scenario. So there is a motion and a second on the floor to go back to our original methodology of just issuing 10 through one and I'd be happy to support that. So if I can ask for either comments or I'm about to ask for a vote. Counselmember Vega.
You know what, I get it. We're confusing everything and, and I think what it was is you want everyone to be fair. No one wants to get a zero or a one and we're trying to be as respectful as possible so no one gets any hurt feelings out here. So I think that's what the goal here is, but I'm going to give you your second just to keep it simple.
So we got a third. So I'm going to call for a vote on the new motion on the floor to return to our original ranking process. We have a motion, we have a second on it, I've even got a third, so I'll call for a vote that we're returning to our second, to our original plan. All in favor? All right, so we are going back to our methodology. There will be a single digit issued for each candidate and it will be starting at 10 being your preferred candidate down to one as the least preferred candidate. And as a reminder to the public, this is not a popularity contest. This is going to be based on the applications presented, the public presentation, and then depending on each of us and what we developed as our own criteria as to what we see as a need on council most likely. So this is not at all popularity. It is to be your application, your presentation and the qualities you bring to council. So I know that all of the candidates are aware of how this process is and that you understand that this is not an individual judgment of you in per se as much as it is a judgment of what is needed on council. So I appreciate your tolerating this.
This is mayor.
Counselmember Vega.
Also, we're going to, just to clarify, we're leaving the tiebreaker until it happens.
I was about to ask, I feel there's a consensus that we leave the tiebreaking solution alone until we actually have one since it seems to be very confusing.
Yes, and I'll give you a second on that one.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on not having a tiebreaker in place.
Did you want public comment on that first?
By the groans in the room, unless there's anyone who wants to make a public comment, raise your hand and I'll open public comment. Seeing no hands, the groan in the room said, no, they're okay with us not going through that battle right now. So by the vote on the board, we're in agreement that we won't put a tiebreaker into place right now and we will make our best effort to not have that occur. Thank you very much for your patience on that. Thank you, Mr. Brian Reitman, for guiding us through that discussion. So back on to the schedule. So we have all received the applications for appointment. We have reviewed them, so A has been taken care of. At this point, we will open the floor to receive public comment. So we will open the floor, we'll leave it at the regular three minutes. So you have three minutes to either tell us a candidate you would like us to support, qualities you're looking for in placement on council or something along the process or considerations you think we should put into this. And so we'll open that floor and this will be the only chance to make a public comment about the process, the applicants or expectations of our judgment on who we put on council.
Sandy Healy, resident of Lompoc for 52 years. If this council is to truly represent the city of Lompoc, I would hope that it would not be another white male, somebody other than a white male.
I, I need to request that you not display favoritism or boos of any sort. This is to be respectful of those that are making an application and not make anyone feel unwelcome or unappreciated for applying or wanting to be a part of this process. So please refrain from clapping, cheering or booing. Thank you.
Get ready, get set, go. Good evening, counsel and Mayor Osborne. The 2018 voting resulted for the Lompoc City Council and Mayor campaign resulted in 6,817 votes for a change in the makeup of the council and mayoral seats. People of Lompoc voiced their dissatisfaction in the way the city has been mired in a combination of budget deficits, lack of proper city maintenance, poor response to citizen requests, including the safety issues of speeding, street maintenance, proper landscaping, park degradation, a loss of gainful employment with businesses leaving the city and loss of fire and police personnel. With the election over, a council seat has opened up for one more person. 10 people have applied for this open seat, but of those 10 persons, only one person actually campaigned for the seat. That was Robert Cuthbert. He received 1,059 votes for District 3. He walked the streets, thousands of people he met, talked to the citizens of Lompoc who were unhappy the way the city seems to come to a standstill mainly due to noncooperation between certain of the three council members and the mayor and one other council person. The standoff has partially been repaired by electing Janelle Osborne as mayor, leaving the possibility of finding one other person. Robert is the only applicant who actually campaigned for the job. He's the only applicant who spoke with the citizens in District 3 who voted for him. 1,059 people voted for him. He's the people's choice. It's my opinion that the city council should honor the person who gained the most votes during the election to earn the seat that is open. This is a chance to prove the city council members have followed the Legal California Brown Act of no previous in private conversation before deciding on a candidate to fulfill this position. It would behoove you to appoint the choice of the voters by selecting Robert Cuthbert as fellow city council member of the city of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you. If you desire to speak, please go ahead and begin lining up so that we have a more efficient evening.
Mayor Osborne, council members, my name's Tom Davidson. I'm a commercial real estate broker in the area and I'm here to support Gilda Cordova. I spent several years working with her during the six years I was on the Economic Development Committee. Gilda's a very bright, extremely hardworking person, capable of managing large, complex projects. She's local gal, very passionate about the city and currently involved with Explorer Lompoc, so she knows how to market the city as well. So that's my idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wally Waldau. I live in District 1. I encourage you all to pick someone who will bring the most to the council. We don't want people who refer to things that have already been said, stupid remarks. We want Lompoc to become a city, a place where families want to move. We don't care to be the marijuana capital of the country, of the California, which it is fast becoming among, in that business. Get your business to Lompoc is what I've heard from people outside this county. We want to be a place where families come and want to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel, members of the public. With all due respect to the previous speaker, I disagree. Right now, what we need to focus on and what is most important in Lompoc is creating jobs and creating income for this city. It shouldn't matter what that industry is. This council has voted to move forward with cannabis and that's what we're going with. It has been voted on by the people, it has been backed by a referendum, that's what we should be focused on. Having said that, I think that the council should consider also what a person's position is on cannabis. The city has invested a lot in cannabis and it would behoove us to appoint someone who would only want to put roadblocks in the process that we have made. Having said that, some of the previous speakers spoke about who we shouldn't have here. We shouldn't have another white person, another white male. Well, although this district elections were created in an effort to allow for minorities to be better represented in the city council, I think it is the opinion of most people, including Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who I remember in his I Have a Dream speech stating that he hoped one day that his children would be judged not by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. And I think that applies to who should become the next city council member. It shouldn't matter what their race is, it shouldn't matter what their background is, it should matter what they're going to bring to this council and how they can help move Lompoc forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Osborne, council members, Ken Ostini, lifelong resident of Lompoc. I know all of you quite well, I've had many discussions and worked with all of you in different capacities. I am here tonight to voice my support for a specific candidate. Even though you've got a bunch of really good candidates, you're only going to pick one. So I can only offer a recommendation for one. I wish I could for more bizarre, other really good candidates out there. I'm going to voice my support for Gilda Cordova. I've worked with Gilda for many years. She is a very sharp, intelligent young lady, as was mentioned by Tom Davidson. She's a hard worker. She truly loves and cares about Lompoc and I think she would be a perfect fit for this council and to help make Lompoc a better place to live. So that's my vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Ball. I'm the chair of the Economic Development Committee, but tonight I want to speak on my own personal behalf. First off, I just want to say that 10 people showing up and making that commitment to show up for duty, I think, is to be commended. I was surprised, I thought there'd be only two or three, but I'm so excited that people showed up to let their voice be heard and I hope that if you are not successful in this attempt, that 2020 will bring many, many of you back to the table and to continue this conversation. I'm going with my gut on this. I am for Gilda Cordova and for a multitude of reasons, I've been on the EDC since 2012. I was actually nominated to be on the EDC at the time by the last female that was on the city council, but none of those things really matter. What qualifies Gilda to take this position is her openness and her honesty and her transparency, her independence, I think, is crucial. I think it's easy for our city from the consumer side, so to speak, to watch council go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth and to watch Lompoc slowly not make progress. It'd be really great to have an independent thinker who didn't agree with all of you or just a couple of you, someone who thought for themselves. Gilda is that person. She's, she's made her life here in Lompoc. She has raised a family, she has built businesses, she has started from the bottom and worked her way to the top. She's inspirational, we need that at city hall. I want people that are growing up here in town to look at their leadership as people that inspire them to want to do something for their community. She does that. Her knowledge of economics, her connection with the base, her connection with marketing Lompoc in Southern California and getting people here to spend their dollars has been critical for the success of, or a little bit of the success that the city has been able to pay some of their bills. So I hope that you'll consider her strongly. She has leadership ability, she can articulate, and I think she'd make a great fit here at city council. So I don't envy your position in choosing, but I hope you make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at Tidoco at 17 Cagney Way. I think I already sent you guys the letter and I hope you guys read it and like everybody else here, I'm also supporting Gilda Cordova, 57% Latino, which would be a reflection of our people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Atul Patel. I'm a local business owner. I am here definitely to support Gilda Cordova, but on a different level. She's been, I would say, employed with me, a partner for the last 20 years in business. And solely what I respect the most about her, when she first came on board, and this is something personal, so forgive me, when she was, I believe, 20, she adopted her brother's son, who was only nine months old. That's the first day she came to work for me and that really showed me a lot of character about Gilda Cordova, who she is as a person, to take on, at that time, somebody else's child. And to this day, she has treated him as her own son and day in and day out, she looks after him, making sure whether it's his education here in Lompoc, whether it's the right jobs. So in that respect, I know Gilda cares a lot for this community. When it comes to the business aspect, we've done multiple properties, not only in Lompoc but in Santa Barbara County. And she definitely has a knack for performers, budgets, marketing definitely, and people skills. And I honestly think that Gilda will be an asset to the council to bring unification, to bring ideas, and to help this city move forward with more businesses and bring in better paying jobs to Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Riley. I don't know Gilda, but it sounds like she's a great person. But I'm here to advocate for Daryl Tullis for the city council. I think he is exactly what the council would need. It would show great diversity on the behalf of the council in the city. He's been here in town, working tirelessly over the last 20, 30 years, working with youth, working with church, working with social organizations, working with the homeless, working with unemployment. He's very knowledgeable about city functions. He's ran for council before. This is a great list of candidates, but when I look on here, I see former people who've already been on the council. And to me, they didn't do their job because the city wouldn't be in the shape that it's in now. We need a new voice. We need new representation and I would say that would be Mr. Tullis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Joshua Keller and I'm from the first district. I've been living here for 15 or 16 years now and I know many of the people in the room here and several of the candidates. I congratulate each of you for putting your foot forward for the town. The first part is really more about the process, about what you will do for the election and who will be elected and that will be represented by the district itself. So I urge you to make those decisions and I believe there's only a couple candidates who are within that open seat in open districts, so along those lines. On a second point, I think I urge you to question the motivations of these individuals, whether this is for personal or for the city. Ask each, ask yourself for each, what made them step forward and what things will they bring that may not be always what you may come into this on an application process, hiring for a job. It's not the same when you're talking about being a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen. I am here to voice my support for Gilda Cordova. I am here to voice my support for Gilda Cordova. And actually, piggybacking on what the gentleman just said, when I found out Gilda was looking to submit her application, I know for a fact that it was not for a personal agenda. She does it because she really cares about the community. I've watched her put in relentless hours into explore Lompoc, or whether it's bringing the business back to Lompoc, just working hard. I have the pleasure of working with her, but also being a personal friend. And in working with her, she never crosses. She's very fair, and she has never, I feel, given me an upper hand, because I know her on a personal basis, so I have no doubt that she will be fair when it comes to the city issues and voicing for the people. So I hope that you guys make the right decision.
Thank you. Public comments still open, please. All righty.
Andrew Jay, resident of Lompoc for, I don't know, forever. I am an ex-council member, as you know. I've been in your spot twice, and it's a very difficult decision that you have to make. And I'm glad you're so transparent, which I think that's an overused word, but I'm glad that you're letting people talk about the process and so on. I am so confused about your process, I'm glad I'm not up there. When you, Mayor Osborne said it, you are looking at someone who has qualifications that the council needs, that the city needs. You can be a good person, you can work in the community, but right now, you need to have some hard-headed people in there, experienced, that know how to handle a budget. And I'm not talking about your little home budget. A city budget is very, very complicated, as you all know. I think, for once, I agree with Mr. Garcia, that we need a qualified person, and you've got a lot of great candidates here. And it's going to be a difficult decision, but I really have faith that you're going to look at it and say, this is what we need right now on council for the city, and to get us out of the budget deficit and to get jobs moving and so on. So good luck with it, and I know you'll do your best.
Thank you.
John McRanell's 49 South A. Person, what did you call it? People skills. Daryl Tollis has people skills, and I have a story to tell you. Back in, you all remember what month it was, remember when the Parkland shootings took place? What month was that? February? February, somewhere in there? There was a demonstration at H and Ocean, right on the northeast corner, right on the vacant lot there, probably 200 people. And on the sidewalk, right in front of them, a gentleman who disagreed with them was there, shouting all kinds of things. I won't repeat them all here. They were not, anyway. And there was real tension, real tension. And Daryl arrived and sized up the thing and disappeared. I didn't think much more about it at the time. Then he reappears with his old Air Force jacket, which he hadn't worn for about 500 years. Of course, he's not that old. But then he began to engage the individual who was protesting the protesters in dialogue. And before long, they're arm-in-arm, crossing over to the other side of the street, where Sue's used to be on the west side, talking, just talking. And by the end, they're giving themselves a hug as they departed, the two of them. I can't think of anybody I know that I've ever seen do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Oh.
Bill Mullins, a longtime citizen, mayor and city council. You know, we hear a lot of good qualifications for a number of people here. And I think there's one candidate that meets all those qualifications. And he also would look at the top, and he'd look at the bottom, and he'd represent all the people. My recommendation would be Daryl Tollis.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Howard. Actually, I went to high school here a long time ago and chose to come back three years ago after being gone for a long time. I think with the city council, there are a couple things to think about. One is, you're paying a lot of money, we're paying a lot of money, for someone who knows a lot about finances, and that's Mr. Throop, which means that all of the council members don't have to know a lot about budget, they just have to know how to talk to Mr. Throop. What we need, I think, is someone with a vision and with energy. And as I look at this, the posting that you had on the city council and the Lompoc page, and also as I've seen other people interact here at previous meetings, there are two people who have energy and visions, and that those are Daryl Tollis and Gilda Cordova. And I think either one of those people would bring some of the energy that they've displayed in the past to the council. And I would suggest that you strongly consider them.
Thank you.
Hi there. Hello to the mayor and to the city council. My name is Charlotte, and I work for Macy's Corporation. I am back here again tonight, and I am advocating and supporting Daryl Tollis. And I believe that Lompoc needs a change. As far as Daryl Tollis is concerned, I personally know him. I believe that he would be qualified to do the job. He does reach out to the community. On my first visit here sometime last month, I made a statement about transparency, and transparency is something that I feel and know that you would get from Daryl Tollis, and of course, vision as well. Doing the job, whether it's budgeting, administrative work, I believe, based on my knowledge of Daryl, with his experience, that he will do well with this community. We need a change. And that's who I'm advocating for. And I just wanted to speak a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, I will close the oral public comments. I do know that we had several public comments received via email, and that we all received them. Any information to share from those?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We did send out, we had one, at least that I received, and I actually asked the city attorney to opine on it, and we sent it out to you. It was just a concern about maybe some incompatibility, some maybe possible Brown Act violations that might come forward. So I asked them to look at it, and in summary, there was no, there was no difference of this candidate from anyone that's already sitting on the dais from conflicts of interest. If anything came up, each person would have to recuse themselves if it pertained to their own property, their own business, whatever the case might be. So the city attorney might have a little bit more to add any more to that.
That's accurate, I'll simply state the same thing. Some of the individuals who've applied may have interests in the city regarding businesses that they work for, properties that they own, boards that they sit on, and may consequently need to recuse themselves from certain votes. But that's standard for candidates and would apply to each of you as well if you were in the same position.
And if anyone is on a commission, correct me, if they're appointed, then they would automatically be removed from that commission, and someone else would be appointed to it. So they wouldn't be sitting as council and as a commission member.
Local city commissions.
On a city commission, that's correct. And none of those issues would disqualify anyone from being appointed tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we have heard the oral public comments, we have received all the email public comments. So now we will move to the portion where each of the applicants will come forward, and you will have three minutes to present yourselves to us. It may be something from the application, it may be something other than the application. And the first individual to come forward, based on the random selection that is reflected here on our ballot, will be Robert Cuthbert. So Mr. Cuthbert, please step forward to the microphone.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name's Robert Cuthbert. One of the questions asked deals with the differences between government and business and nonprofit budgets. As a community activist, public safety commissioner for 10 years, and an interested citizen, I have been a witness to many budget cycles, none more critical than the present one. The fundamental difference, besides the obvious parameters and limitations placed by the state, is politics, if I may use that word. Government budgets are a public affair, and that's something you don't see in business. You don't see every possible nuance, every possible opinion being expressed and dealt with. That means decisions are made in conjunction with the public, and demands the appointee has experience dealing with a community's diverse wants and needs. After running several times and knocking on thousands of doors, I know the public, the public knows me, the council knows where I stand on a broad range of all issues. I am a known quantity to everyone on city council and many people in the community. I have a proven temperament, which is something would be advantage to fill that seat. The appointee needs to be someone who can take the heat that comes with a territory to be effective. You know the pressures well, and so do I. I also have learned, after once thinking otherwise, that expansion is the only real and tangible path to an improved economy. The gatekeeper, LAFCO, needs to pay attention to this community's needs, and that is a political reality. We need to bring more citizens to the LAFCO meetings and put the pressure on. While Santa Maria and Galleta have expanded their economies, we are plodding along within borders hardly greater than decades ago. I am a working man turned university graduate, with a long list of employments from labor to professional, both public and private. Anyone on council needs a wide experience and not expertise only in a narrow field. I want to be on council to work with the mayor and council members in the most practical and pragmatic way possible. I want to bring in the public to move the community forward and away from division. Working together means moving ahead. I am a public person. You know my record. The voters and council deserve someone they know, and someone who is independent. I have not participated, nor have I necessarily outright supported anybody on the current council and past councils, and I have run. And you all know me, that I'm easy to get along with, I'm cordial, and I'm polite. And I have no conflicts of interest possible. I am ready to hit the ground running, up the steep end of the learning curve. And also, the district deserves somebody who's only a placeholder for two years so the voters can just go. Thank you.
Thank you. The next applicant to present is Stephen Bridge.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Steve Bridge. I've lived in Lompoc for 30-plus years. I'm married to a local girl with five kids, 10 grandkids, and five great-grandkids. I want what's best for them, as well as what's best for Lompoc. We all know what perhaps the biggest issue coming is. It's the budget and the pressure that's being placed on the city because of CalPERS. Even though we all wish it was true that we could grow out of this problem, or that we could bring in a bunch of new businesses, and we all want that, that's not going to solve in a timely manner. We have to be realistic. Hard decisions are coming, and the council's going to have to come together and make those decisions and meet that challenge. I've been watching the council for four or five years, and I look at the council and I see people who all want to do well by Lompoc. I've seen the council which listens to data and information and has the courage and integrity to change their vote when it's deemed appropriate. I've seen a council that's willing to work hard and dive into the details, and at all levels, and bring that information back. And we have a council with a strong, common sense approach and an empathy for what it does to the people in our city when we make our decisions. And finally, we have a council that desires a consensus with civility. Those are all great values, and I appreciate those values. If I'm nominated or elected, I'll be coming with an engineering perspective, with a pretty deep understanding of financial constraints. I respect your divergent talents, and I believe my background and approach would be synergistic with that. I'm not going to go into the details, you all have my CV that was given to you with the application. I'll point out one thing. Recently, I worked on the Parks and Recs upcoming budget manning and budget challenges, and I presented that to each of you. I think that was a good representation of how I address challenges, what I would bring to the board, and how I would approach those challenges. So my goal's to work hard, achieve consensus, and where possible, solve problems. So in conclusion, I'm here to ask what each of you has had to do in your past. I'm asking for you to grant me the honor and the privilege to work with you and improve the community. Thank you for reviewing my application and listening to my thoughts. And while I never thought I would be saying this, I am personally asking each of you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The next applicant to present is Thomas Fair. Thomas Fair. Making sure he's not in the restroom, and repeat one more time, or outside having a cigarette. Okay, so we will move on. Our next individual to present will be Nikolai Nikolenko. Please come forward.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I have volunteered for numerous campaigns within the city. I've given my time to various food distribution charities within the city. I'm a neighborhood activist, I pay attention to what happens in my neighborhood. I may not have run a business, I may not have all of these expertise, but what I do have is a passion for this community, a passion to see this community grow, a passion to bring jobs, enterprise, whatever we need to become successful in this community. And I think we need to work with the cannabis industry in Lompoc to help our budget. I think we can grow our tax rate, our tax base, without raising our taxes and without raising our utility rates. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next applicant to present is Ed Braxton.
Good evening, council members, mayor.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Osborne, everyone gathered here this evening. It's a huge privilege for me to stand before you now as you consider your appointment to our city council. There are many well-qualified candidates for you to consider tonight, and I'm sure your task will not be easy. Please choose the applicant you believe is the best prepared to serve our city. I decided to apply for the city council vacancy to use my experience to help move our city forward. I'm doing so with the support of my family, knowing full well that this is a serious commitment. If appointed, I will not take the duties of a council member lightly. I will be accountable to the people of Lompoc as if they elected me. I will be accountable to the city's municipal code, and I will ever be mindful of the oath of office. I will listen and thoughtfully make decisions with the hope of building consensus on what is best for the city of Lompoc, based on what is true and based on what is fair. For the better part of the last decade, I've worked in the public sector at Lompoc Valley Medical Center, which is, as you know, a healthcare district subject to the requirements of the Brown Act. I am trained under AB 1234. I believe that working in a public agency setting prepares me very well to be a council member. My more than twenty-five years of experience in management within large enterprises, I firmly believe, can be of immediate benefit to the city and to this council. This includes fiscal responsibility and resourceful management. In addition, I will also bring my expertise in the past as a first responder to benefit our city. I spent seventeen years in the volunteer fire service, and my father was a police officer. I care very much about public safety and the issues and challenges that our police, fire, and emergency personnel face every day. I want to help ensure that they have the resources required to do their jobs, do them well, and to make our city the safest that it can be. I just want Lompoc to flourish. We all have to work together to solve some very real challenges facing us now and in the coming years. We must utilize all of our resources to rise to these challenges, which include our city's staff, our volunteers on advisory committees, and all of the people of our city. If selected, I commit to you that solving problems will always be my motivation. I will collaborate with you in a spirit of fairness to make decisions that are the most beneficial for Lompoc. I thank you for considering me for this appointment. If I am selected, I look forward to all of us working together to make the city of Lompoc even better than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Dwayne Holmdahl.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to see you. And what I tell you really, I've been here in Lompoc since nineteen fifty-four, so I've watched a lot of changes in the town. It was fourteen thousand, now it's forty-four thousand, and the growth and what the chamber has and others had to do. But what I'm real pleased is to see who we have here tonight, the number of people who came down to watch this event, to see what's going on. You have a lot of pressure on you to do this. I've been in this city, I've done all kinds of jobs. I've been on the city council, I've been on the state mining and geology board, I also a county supervisor, and other departments. I've taken all that stuff, and I want to bring all that information with me to you to help put out. The one thing I looked at, and you may have already taken care of, is that in the seat that we're trying to fill, if you don't live in District One, you can't run the next time in that council seat, because that is, you've got to be living in District One to run in. That's what I looked at, I thought, I didn't want to get the council caught in that. So when I'm running, I'll be doing it really to take care of the city as a whole, because I really can't be a council member in that in the next go-around. You've heard some excellent comments tonight. I'm really pleased with the number of people I've seen and heard here tonight, of what their comments are. And I don't think I've heard those a lot of times in a lot of campaigns of anything else I've been in. They're here to make it work. I watched Lompoc grow over the years, and like I said, I've had mining operations, I've had other operations, I had a feed store, and also helped bring the wine industry, and I worked with my radio show. So I'm here to sell Lompoc, and wherever I went, I sold Lompoc. And so I think that's the one thing, we always have to be out there, you can bring jobs in. As a notary, we bring people in from all over, and I'm always filling out notary, oh, I love Lompoc, I would like to get here. So there's a lot of real positive comments, a lot of times we don't hear them, but we do have some comments, and it's a real positive. So just a short one, I'm really pleased with the council. I'm really happy with the number of people who showed up here tonight, and the comments that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you. The next applicant to speak will be Sasha Keller.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, good evening, city council members. My name is Sasha Keller, and I've lived in Lompoc my entire life, other than the years I spent serving as a medic in the United States Army. My childhood home is in District One, and I've been a homeowner since two thousand nine in District One. I am currently raising two daughters who attend schools in Lompoc Unified School District and are both active in the performing arts at Lompoc School of Dance. I have a master's degree in nursing leadership and management, and I'm currently the director of nursing at the five-star comprehensive care center of Lompoc Valley Medical Center. I've worked for the district hospital for over fifteen years. And during that time, I have worked closely with the community in many areas of healthcare delivery. Some of my responsibilities of my current position include setting policies, budget oversight, and ensuring the safety of all the residents within the facility. I work closely and collaboratively with nursing leadership and ancillary departments to ensure that goals are met. And how I do that is by working as a team player. And it's my job as part of a team to ensure that all team members understand what the goal is by communicating clearly what that goal may be, so that together, we all have a say in the direction of our facility. This speaks to the passion that I have for problem-solving and working collectively with all members of a team. I am hardworking, ambitious, and I'm always eager to get the job done. I understand that the current budget deficit and public safety matters are key issues facing our community today. It is my goal to use a team approach, communication skills, and resourcefulness to find viable paths to sustainable funding and preventing unnecessary reduction of personnel. I would like to end my time here by answering a question that the mayor, city council members, and the public may have, and that question is, why am I here? I'm here because I'm invested in this community. I see the beauty and the potential in this city, and I believe that I have the skills, the drive, and the want to be an effective servant to the people of Lompoc. If I'm appointed, I commit to work hard alongside each of you to work towards eliminating the budget deficit, increase public safety, and certainly represent the citizens of Lompoc. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next applicant to present is Darrell Tullis.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, citizens of Lompoc. This is one of my least favorite things, believe it or not. And I started to bring a written statement, but because of something that happened yesterday, my written statement completely changed. I ran for office a few times here in the city, and I received over two thousand votes each time. And I ran on helping our youth succeed, I ran on public safety. I was even asked by this city to run, to manage the T2008 Half-Cent Sales Tax Initiative to help public safety. I ran on those things because I said the fact that our youth, if they weren't given opportunities, would either become alcoholics, drug addicts, or get pregnant, and not have opportunities to move forward. Well, yesterday, my vehicle was stolen right out in front of my house, and that changed my statement for tonight. My statement for tonight is, we have to do something to help our public safety. Our police officers are out there fighting. I could be very bitter, but I'm not. I'm very fortunate. I have another vehicle. That vehicle could have been stolen from somebody who only had one. There's a scripture that I love, and people who know me, who share Bible study with me in church know, that that scripture that I love all the time says, "Count it all joy when we're faced with diverse temptations, for the trying of your faith worketh patience." And right now, the joy that I am finding in the fact that that vehicle was taken was that I have another vehicle. But there are a lot of people in this city that wouldn't have that other vehicle. There are a lot of youth in this city that are going to need opportunities. We can have the skills to bring business to this community, but if we don't bring business and education for our youth that's going to help them succeed, then we're wasting our time. To continuously bring hotels or other business here that helps people who are already wealthy get wealthier, the wine community wealthier, but it's not bringing education and opportunity to our youth, it's a waste of time. I told Mayor Dewise years ago that this city was dying because we weren't doing things for our youth. And by the time, before he passed, he agreed with me, we have got to bring education and opportunities to our youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next applicant to speak is Gilda Cordova.
Good evening, city council, mayor, and members of the public. I am honored to be standing here before you tonight with the opportunity to potentially serve this community in a greater capacity than what I have done in the last few years. I am a resident of Lompoc. I've been here since the age of five. As a child, I never dreamed of leaving. Lompoc has always felt like home to me. My desire to serve in city council stems from the love that I have for this community. I love Lompoc. In addition, I have served on different committees, organizations, and nonprofits that have opened my eyes to the needs of this community. Although my career has been in the corporate sector, I feel that I hold very strong skills that would help strengthen the makeup of our current city council. My strong leadership skills, relentless desire to serve, and the development of constant desire to develop people, my ability to deliver forward-thinking ideas aimed at expansion, growth, and progress. I am an independent thinker with my own opinions and ideas that can deliver my own opinions and views with a caring approach and always with the intent to create unification. I would like to help steer Lompoc in the right direction and help provide solutions for the mounting issues that this community is facing. I am an engaged citizen that is always willing to roll up my sleeves and do work, and also be a liaison. I want to see Lompoc grow while still seeking, while still keeping its identity. Many in our community perhaps don't see the value of our city, and some on social media and other outlets have claimed that Lompoc's identity is less than bright, but I refuse to believe that. I know firsthand why so many people from all walks of life visit this community every spring, every summer, and every time there's an opportunity to see the skies above us light up and feel the rumble of the latest exciting rocket launch. I have a strong business background that spans over twenty years. I am very capable and knowledgeable in budgets and performance, reading and dissecting financial reports. I do feel that I could bring great ideas and help the current council tackle the job of balancing the city's budget. My passion lies with issues pertaining to the safety and security of our community, helping to make Lompoc a business-friendly community that will truly attract development that will turn into opportunities for jobs and revenue growth for our city. I want to see our youth receive opportunities here in our own backyard. I want to see my son have an opportunity here. You can sit out in the community, and you can have an opinion, complain, or make fun of the people that sit up here, but if you don't like what you see up here, we all have the choice to get involved and create an impact that creates improvement for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The final presentation will come from Robert Dunlop.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Never in my life would I have thought I'd be standing here doing this, but it's a great chance without having to have a campaign and a war chest and all that goes with that campaign, which I would never have. I wouldn't take outside money, so I'm out of luck on that, too. So this gives me the opportunity to have a chance to sit up here. I've sat in the audience for many years now, and a lot of the time biting my tongue as different high-level staff danced around the truth, or, you know, almost called it flat-out lies sometimes. It's very sad to me. I would hope to stop that kind of behavior, at least see through it. Back a couple of years ago now, as I see it, crying wolf about the budget, making the papers, like Lompoc was broke the next day, which I don't believe was true. There are always tough budget problems or issues you have to deal with, but at that time, I think there was some mistruth there. I'm hoping to bring back some trust in the city government. I hope we can do that and move forward and do what's right for the majority. Again, it's not easy. One of my main issues, and it goes back to budget unfortunately also, is the lack of support we get from the county. There's a lot of smart people in this town, both private and government. Somehow, we need to come together as this community and get the county's attention somehow. I'm not quite sure what it is, but we certainly need to develop a plan so we're not in the, as I see it, we've got an unfair share of load on this community. And thank you very much. Thank you and the audience for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That concludes the presentations by all of the applicants. At this point, we will close that presentation, and we will move to voting. So we will take the next five to ten minutes to consider and fill out our ballots. I'm going to turn my light off, and I will suggest that as you complete your ballot, you turn your light on so staff can collect the ballot from us as a signal that we're completed, and leave your light on so that we know when we're all completed. Thank you for your applying, for getting up in front of us, for being willing to take the risk. This position is at large, and while we have several who reside in District One, it is not a mandate that we appoint someone for District One, just to clarify it. And now I will appreciate, while I encourage you to chat, to please keep it at a low level so that we can complete our task and... and bring it back to you within 10 minutes. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
So there's just, I promised a small procedural issue that I just wanted to bring to your attention. So there is, in terms, so in step one, we have the totals, right? So there's one person who has the highest total, but then there are two people who have the second highest total. So in other words, there's one person who has a score of 39 and then the next highest is 31, but there are two people with 31. So I just want to clarify how you all would like to do the procedure. A suggestion is that you would compare the number one vote getter with each of the number two vote getters and see if, and basically do two runoffs. So one versus 2A and one versus 2B and then see if, see, you know, see if that, if that brings a consensus. That's my suggestion, but there...
Councilmember Starbuck.
Sounds like we have a winner. I think we should go with it.
Any other discussion or second of that suggestion? Councilmember Vega.
It sounds like we have someone that prevailed. Is that correct?
We have, so before I say, I want to, I just want to be clear on how you want to solve this, this second place tie.
So the question on the floor from Councilmember Vega is we have a definitive first place winner.
For step, for step one?
For step one.
That's correct.
At 39.
I guess I'll further state, if you compare number, so maybe this is unnecessary. If you compare number one to either 2A or 2B in a runoff, number one wins both of those runoffs. I just want to be clear that that's how you want to do it, just for ultimate clarity and...
So the, the fairer way would be if, if, and I'm not sure if the tie results, but the fairer way would be to look at the tie, the second tie and do an automatic runoff between those two based on our points and then compare that winner against the ultimate winner. But it sounds like there may be some discussion that there is a clear point winner in the very first step, so I want to finish that conversation.
Yes.
So the, the answer to your question is there is a definitive number one spot, but in comparing the top two vote getters, there is a second place tie.
I think we should keep it simple and I think the one that prevailed and if there is a clear winner, that's which we should go with.
So there is a motion and a second, I'm hearing? Okay, any other discussion before I call for a vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, so to be clear, the motion is that the winner is the person that got the most points outright?
Yes.
Great, in that case, the winner is Gilda Cordova.
So now that we have a clear winner, we can swear you in if you would please come forward and you will be sworn in so that you can join us at our next council meeting. To all of you who applied, if you want to continue, apply for a committee or commission because Gilda's going to have a position open. If you're already serving on committees and commissions, please continue to do so and please consider staying involved in the civic side of our community. It was wonderful to see 10 applicants come forward and I really, really appreciate every single one of you putting yourself out there and I look forward to seeing all of you at the council meetings in the future. It is wonderful to see this diverse population representing the community and voicing what you'd like to see happen. So please continue to attend and support Gilda in her new position. Madam Clerk?
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Gilda Cordova,
Gilda Cordova.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies,
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic,
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support the laws and policies
That I will support the laws and policies.
Of the City of Lompoc
Of the City of Lompoc.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Gilda, please join us on the dais as we close out our meeting.
You should make a council request.
We will close our meeting with council requests, comments, and meeting reports and we'll begin with Councilmember Victor Vega.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just quickly, I just want to point out to everyone in the public that the official vote is now up on the screen, just so it's clear how everyone voted.
Thank you, yes. The screen is showing our, our vote tallies and that will be part of the public record.
They don't have the name tag. Clean out that drawer.
It's already been done. Compared to what I thought. All right, Councilmember Vega, do you have any council requests, comments, or meeting report?
No council requests at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Cordova.
Nothing to report. I also have nothing to report. Again, thank you all for being here, thank you for participating, thank you for taking the risk to apply and continue to participate. We are adjourned until the Lompoc City Council meeting, January 15th, Tuesday at 6:30. Thank you.